Certain policies and procedures and internal controls were being used that they could have probably snapped this thing within the first six months of any embezzlement that was taking place. So, listen, I've always said that I'll take responsibility what goes in my office. We changed everything. I got nothing to hide. But I don't hire the city comptroller. I don't do any of that. And there's certain responsibility that is upon them to take care of, do their job as well. My responsibility is to verify as all that I can possible, then have a second verification from the comptroller's office. That's their job. That's why the comptroller is the chief financial officer of the city. That's their responsibility.
Mr. Sanders, thank you. If you, like I asked, if you could please later on, put a presentation together, bring it back to the council and present it to the council and the city and this community. I really would, I think all of us really would appreciate that, including the citizens. So this way, because the workshop, we really need to move along the workshop so that we can get to the regular meetings. So I'm not trying to stop you, stop you from talking, but we really need to move the process along.
So, I have to say one more thing.
Lie about stuff and not tell the truth and just put this false spin out there. That's not right.
I understand, but if this way-
But you know what? I agree with you. I'm not gonna, you know, because last year, this person served me some type of restraining to try to stop me from coming to council meeting, but it's in God's hand. I'm not worried about it. I'm gonna keep doing what I'm doing. I'm blessed by the Lord. I'm not gonna let an evil person like that control me.
Thank you. This is a workshop. So we're just trying to get through it. Thank you.
I got a question. Wait a minute. I just gotta make one comment for the record. So he talks about six months. This embezzlement went off for ten years. You'd also-
And I, I got a question-
That'll give us an opportunity to discuss it later on when he-
Excuse me, I got a question for the city manager or acting assistant city manager. What I just heard right now was the embezzlement was from the comptroller's office and not the treasurer's. Where was the money embezzlement from? What office?
Well, the report is clear that the embezzlement, where the embezzlement took place in the-
Where does the report say it took place at?
In the treasurer's office. The question, I believe, Madam Councilperson Zarita was alluding to, has to do with the reconciliations. And on the reconciliation, there is a partnership between the treasurer's office and the comptroller's office. And that's something that both are working on actively now.
I would like a report back from the city manager or the city attorney because I sat in the same room as everybody else on this dais when we were told that the treasurer doesn't want to do a presentation to the residents and that he was not cooperating in doing daily reconciliations with the money. Last I heard, it was every two weeks, and that's what was told to us. And he's saying something different, so I want to get to the bottom of it and find out what's really being done or not being done.
He did agree to make a presentation-
I was talking to the city manager.
Mr. Assistant City Manager, the city treasurer just agreed to make a presentation, come back and make a presentation to the council and the community.
My request stands.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Are we gonna take the city attorneys?
Yes, we're gonna do the city attorney, then after that, we'll have to move the other ones over to the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Cornwall.
Mayor Pro Tem, we will still need audience comments. So I'll be as quick as possible.
And just before you get started, Mayor Pro Tem, we only have one other left. We ought to try to finish this.
No, it's two.
It's two?
Yes, two other. General services and the building safety.
Oh, I don't have building.
We have three. One's in DuHill. We have two left.
Okay, city attorney's office. Our mission of the city attorney is to minimize the city of Compton's legal exposure, ensure compliance with applicable laws, and provide the city with sound legal advice with unquestionable integrity. Some of the core functions for the department provide legal advice to city councils, city staff, and various boards and commissions. Prosecute, defend, prosecute criminal misdemeanor violations within the city's jurisdiction. Defend civil lawsuits in which the city is a party. Administer the city's workers' compensation program. Manage city's insurance portfolio. And investigate claims presented against the city. Some of the accomplishments, first I have some notable facts. There was a seventy-nine percent decrease in pothole claims from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. So when the city manager's office says the, one of their goals is to fill potholes, I'm the end result of that, that that's occurred because the claims are significantly reduced. We've had a reduction in the, twenty-one percent decrease in work-related injuries from last fiscal year. So our safety is improving. We had a very, a very good workers' compensation audit from the state this year. It occurs every five years. And we went through the audit with no, with no penalties being assessed. One of the issues which I, I think separates us from other city attorney departments in the state or in the county, eighty-nine percent of our lawsuits are retained in-house. Right now, we have approximately forty-five suits against the city and five are with outside counsel. We have prosecuted ninety-three misdemeanors. They are typically quality-of-life cases. Loitering, drinking alcohol in public, et cetera. Our nuisance cases where we go to court, try to get authority to go on private property to cure a nuisance situation has significantly decreased this year. And I believe that's due to the rise in the use of administrative citations. But there'd be more discussion on that with a code enforcement presentation. The goals, one of the issues that have really plagued us this year is documentation. The laws for transparency and public documents have grown. So the responsibility on the city for retention and being able to access various documents have significantly increased over the last few years. We would like to do discovery, training. We need to be able to pull documents from multiple departments quickly. And to help this process, we would like to develop electronic retention policy that details how long the city will retain email and other electronic data. And that would make the searches and the information that we provide less of a burden on the city staff. The expenditure analysis is an extremely dark slide. The numbers are gonna represent approximately a $200,000 increase in the liability fund.
Oh, I just didn't have the tabs.
Last year was a, I believe, a reduction in the liability fund. So we have always, over the past ten years, had the fund between approximately 1.4 million and $2 million. Last year was on the low end at 1.4. So 1.6 is anticipated for this year. And that's the, so those numbers will show approximately a $200,000 increase. It says three additional staff. I think it's one full-time and a part-time position. One of the proposals that I'm gonna bring forward to this dais is a a legal intern physician, a paid legal intern physician. A part-time physician from the, for someone from the community. Hopefully to get experience in a law firm and to help them navigate through law school. We have met, I have met a few students from the city. And I think such a position would really benefit them and help them with their careers. The third position, I believe, is referencing the city clerk's paralegal position. It's not a dual position. It's the same one. So if it's in the clerk's office, it wouldn't be in the, in my department. And that concludes the presentation.
What would the paralegal be doing?
The paralegal position is specifically for pulling documentation, understanding the public records laws, and helping to gain access and quickly get that information to turn over.
Like for public requests?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's crucial for the city. I think that position should have been filled. They should have been had that.
Any other questions?
Counselor, any other questions? If not, we'll take questions from the, audience comments from the presentations that was made this evening.
Is it three minutes or two minutes or what, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk.
Three.
Three? Okay. Yes, if you have any questions in regarding to the presentations or any concerns or any statements that you would like to make in regards to the presentations made.
Hello, everyone. I have a question regarding Career Link. Do you plan on moving Career Link here? Because I like having it where it is. It is accessible. It is handicap accessible. There is parking, and I like the way they interact with the community. You can utilize Career Link even if you're not looking for a real job. And I may not, should say this, but they're real good with people with disabilities. So I just want to make sure. Are you moving Career Link or is Career Link staying? I mean, I don't know if you're able to answer that. My next question would be to the city clerk. Thank you so much for getting us audio. We've only been asking for it for a while, and it is time. But I know things happen. The next question is planning. For the people who are trying to get there, they don't have automobile. How are they gonna cross over to Ninety-One? Because it is not handicap accessible by any means. I'm just making a statement of fact. When my son and I are coming back that way even from walking, he's now in a position where he has to be in a street. So I try to avoid it. So if we're gonna build a new shopping center with a bunch of things coming, are we gonna maybe chop on the curb or do something to pull the curb out a couple of entries so you can make it handicap accessible? I kinda don't want to because that's money that is gonna cost the city. But I'm just asking a general question. And last but not least, Dougie, it was good seeing you today. I wish that we could see you a little bit more often. Okay, thank you.
We have an opportunity to speak now.
Good evening. I am Joyce Kelly. And as far as Career Link is concerned, you can't move it. Don't move it. You already don't provide jobs. I'm talking to the council members, city manager, whoever. I don't know why, yes, I do. You want to get rid of, or is it you or is it your dictator want to get rid of? Everything that has been decent in the city of Compton. I guess we'll have to go outside the city, to the county, to the state, or to the federal government and make a stand so they could come in here and clarify. And make sure that we have our rights and our freedoms, our civil rights. Mr. City Attorney, from last year, your budget has increased $1,117,487, minus the $200,000 for liability. It's increased $917,487. And then you say you have additional staff members. Three. Now, why would you need three additional staff members? And I was under the impression one is going to be trained. If you're going to give people our money, hard-earned dollars, then I think they should be already trained, equipped, and qualified when they come in and receive a salary like this city pays these employees. So as far as your increase, we could use this increase of over a million dollars or even $917,000 to fix some of those potholes you've been denying the people in the city. They have increased because the people are tired of coming forth and being denied their rights to have their cars fixed or anything else. But I'm gonna watch this and I make sure. You make sure some of these line items we mentioned through the year are in this budget. Thank you.
Before the next speaker speaks, I just want to make sure that everybody in the audience and everybody watching at home knows that these presentations are not being done by the city council. These are not our recommendations. These are not what the council decided we want to do. These are presentations done by the department heads. And I believe the council at the end will be able to implement some of the changes that we want to make. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, correct.
Yes, the- Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. The presentations that are made tonight are the proposed budgets from the department head level. These budgets are being reviewed by the city manager's office along with the revenues that are being provided by the city comptroller. And the city manager will bring forth his proposed budget on May 31st. So right now, you're receiving in today's presentations those requests essentially from the department managers. And the city council has not had an opportunity yet to address these matters. But for that matter, the city manager has not prepared his final recommendations.
And I believe also before that date, we would have had a town hall in each district discussing the budget, correct?
Yes, we're having town hall meetings in each council district. First town hall meeting will be tomorrow night.
Yes.
I wrote some notes. Twenty pounds of $20 bills. How much money is that? Do we have any accountants here? Can you figure it out? Well, you said, the treasurer said that we have dual. That's two people. That kind of money. You need three or five. This is supposed to be an unequal number. I worked for it. Yeah, I used to work for Hughes Aircraft. And I learned a lot of stuff. And one thing was inventory. And they always would, inventory, you could inventory money. So if it come up short after it touched three people, you missed it somewhere. I got two daughters that's accountants. They got degrees in accounting. And their mother was an accountant. My mother knew how to count, and I can't count. But the thing about it is, they inherited some from me. All I know how to do is ask for money. And I hate to say it, I can't even count back change. So I'd rather get checks than money because the kind of work I do, if I get a deposit, cash deposit, somebody will rob me. So therefore, I don't accept cash. Because a person give you a lot of cash, somebody's gonna rob you on the way to the bank. So that's all I have. You need about three people, not dual. I got two daughters that's accountants, and I know what I'm talking about, even though I cannot count money. But thank God to the calculator. And what you could do is like, like the Dow Jones averages every day. They say, if you call your bank that you call, you could find out from your bank how much money you got in there. And then you could list it on the internet. Everything's, oh no, it's time for me to stop talking.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dan Oliver. I mean, I'm born and raised here in Compton. I'm also the chairperson or the chairman of the Employment and Training Advisory Council with the Compton Career Link. We work with the wonderful Ms. Kimberly McKenzie. I've been a part of the commission for going on four years now. I feel like I've grown into an adult and changed professions plenty of times while I've been a part of the commission. But my question was is about staffing it, is that we've only been running with about three or four members. I feel like the commission is pretty much impotent because we can never come to a quorum. I think that it's a valuable commission. It's a valuable service that the Career Link offers. If anyone had gotten the presentation that Ms. McKenzie put together, you'd see that we have been having local hires and everything, and I'm sure you all are aware of. But I would like, especially as the chairman of the commission, for the commission to be, have people appointed onto it so that we can function. I do believe that there's some pressing issues as well with the Career Link that could be addressed even with such as signage, maybe even putting it up, a new sign for the Career Link. Write their own bullets would be, would do wonders. But just in general, that's just all I have to say. So thank you.
Any other statements or remarks regarding the presentations? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharif?
Here. Madam City Clerk? It is now, oh, it is now 5:54 and time for our regular city council meeting. Can we all stand for a moment of salutes and pledge of allegiance?
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharif?
Here. We are now in audience comments.
I need just a couple of seconds to go get it.
We'll take a brief moment for her to gather the audience comments. We are now in audience comments. The first speaker will be Prince James.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. James.
I come to bring some good news. And in fact, I came here in part to respond to one of the people that I heard earlier who talked about the fact that maybe we didn't have enough jobs here in Compton. Well, good news. We just answered your wish. We're having a job fair tomorrow at the Great Compton College between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. tomorrow. I have flyers available for you, and I'll leave these in the lobby for anyone who wants to participate. I also have a list of some of the employers. It's about over, I'm gonna say about seventy-five-ish, you know, employers that'll be attending the job fair. So for all your constituents, if you have not already gotten the flyer that I sent to a few people. What are we doing? I've already sent the flyer out to a couple of people. So if you, I don't know if you guys had a chance to put it on your social media or on whatever platform that you guys use to share information. The Honorable Emma Sharif is gonna be coming over tomorrow to open up our ceremony and share some amazing words with the veterans. So although it's entitled Hire a Hero, Hire a Veteran Job Fair, it's actually open to everybody, to the general public. So by all means, if you have an opportunity, if you're looking for employment, if you're looking for resources, come on down to the job fair. This was put together in part by the America's Job Center of California in Rancho Dominguez. And we partnered with so many different people. I work for the Employment Development Department. We have people from the county of Los Angeles who have partnered with us. We've even, you know, reached out and partnered with representatives from Compton Career Link. So we're a great big, you know, partnership of individuals. So for the person, for the individual who maybe was interested in jobs, I have an invitation for you, and I'll hand it to you personally. Yeah, I think, I heard somebody mentioning jobs. I heard a beautiful voice mentioning we need some jobs here in our community. So I wanted to make sure that I have a flyer available so you can share with anybody that you might like. And I think that's all my time. If you have any questions, probably not. Okay.
Mr. Prince, thank you so much for coming.
Oh, no, thank you guys.
We're not-
Mayor Pro Tem.
Chris McCauley.
Good evening. I'm Chris McCauley from the 1st District. I'm here about an item on the agenda for the Rosewood Redskins to be added to the joint use agreement with the city of Compton and the school district for youth football. I'm just here to persuade everyone to vote for our District 1 so Centennial High School can have a youth football team in our own school so we won't have to travel to Carson, Torrance, you know, everywhere else but Centennial. So this is gonna actually help our football team. I've spoke with the principal, the athletic director, and I've also spoken with the- I've spoke with the principal, the athletic director, and I've also spoken with the football coach, and they're all in agreeance that we need a program like this. So I'm just asking that when, when it comes across your desk, that you vote for this. Thank you.
Uh, Atro Nguyen.
Hello, everyone again. Um, I have just two points. One is Councilwoman Zarita, I want to thank you for all the questions you asked last week about people doing, advancing things and not having the invoice in front of you. Uh, the second question is, last week, um, someone asked about the veteran stand down. I just wanna know, do we have an answer? No answer still? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Al Sanders.
Good evening, Council, uh, Madam Protem Mayor, uh, Al Sanders, Fourth District. I'd just like to give a big shout out to our Parks and Rec Direct, Parks and Recs Director, uh, Marvin Hunt and his assistant, uh, Aubrey Ref, for their, they opened us a collaboration on the, um, City's Hundred and Thirtyth Celebration, which was held at Burrell McDonald Park, um, where we had the honor of having Olympian Ronaldo Brown, Compton High School graduate nineteen sixty-eight, to throw out the first pitch ball, and, uh, also accompanied by Councilwoman Tana McCarthy from the Third District, who also threw out, threw out the, uh, first pitch ball. And then on, oh, that was Saturday, at, um, the Dollar Light Community Center, we had a beautiful Mother's Day celebration, and another collaborative, uh, celebration of the City's Hundred and Thirtyth Birthday Celebration, honoring our mothers of Compton and, uh, the city overall. So I'd just say, it's a great pleasure working in collaboration with the city and its departments, and putting on different events throughout the city. And that's what the Stewards Society is all about, just, uh, trying to put a little spin on the hub city, because there are a lot of myths and mistruths, and things settle the years to put a, uh, a different light on the hub city. And we think that, uh, it's high time we just show the city, the world, and the nation what Compton's all about. Thank you very much.
Dan Oliver.
Hi, I'm, uh, back again. But, um, I guess it was just an extension of what I was saying before, um, of just, uh, other opportunities that the Career Link could greater serve the community again. Uh, I know we haven't had a youth, a summer youth, uh, employment program, uh, um, but it would be interesting to try to think, uh, about, or, or even if, um, the commission could serve together to think and brainstorm of ideas of creating, uh, a nice streamline, uh, of, of trained and employed workers to go into the industries that are, are here in Compton, as well as, as new industries that are coming into the city, uh, to open up. I'm sorry, I'm like switching over my words right now, but, um, I, I, I think it's i- important to highlight as well, um, the opportunities and the uses that the Career Link could be used for, as well, uh, in continuing partnerships with staffing agencies, as well as, uh, companies that are looking for, uh, workers, um, that we have access to because they've been coming to the Career Link consistently. Um, that, those are just ideas, I'm just, um, throwing it out. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, just to clarify, it's not grant funded anymore, right?
No, Career Link is funded, uh, one hundred percent by the, uh, General Fund of the City.
How long has it been funded like that? Six years?
I would have to bring a report back on that.
Thanks.
Mr. David Irons.
David Irons, resident of Compton for sixty-six years now. People was talking about the water. All they got to do is stop paying their water bill, boycott that stuff. I could talk like this because I'm sixty-six years old, I didn't expect to live this long. Now, a guy named Webster, Daniel Webster, he was a lawyer. Amistad, he said, "Take everything from me except my voice, because I could talk and get everything back." And I'm on my route, because they take my stuff from me, and I'm donating a lot of stuff to people. And I ain't gonna have a yard sale. Now, there's a guy named Bobby. He works, he's a paralegal. I don't have rental property, I don't want rental property, because I tried to evict somebody, and they put a hole in my floor and called the Health Department on me. So those people need to call the Health Department on those people. They don't come up here to the council meeting asking y'all. Code enforcement is outside. So Bobby's number is three one zero two nine two four five seven one five three. Nine two four seven one five three. So when a person gets evicted, they could counter and stop the eviction. I, you know how I know? Because it happened to me. That's why I don't like, uh, rental property. A renter can stay, can starve so much, man, they'll lose their house, the owner. So you have to know how to fight, and you can't come to council meeting asking these things. You could fight by going to get a paralegal against your eviction. And then you file bankruptcy, and they stay there longer than people own the house. I know, because it happened to me. So I'm aga, I'm anti gentification, I'm anti rezoning, and I'm anti bond measures, because when you get a bond, the property owner has to pay their property taxes, not the renter. So what they do is go up on the rent. I'm against rent control, because here you buy a property, and they gonna try to tell you, I'm against anybody trying to tell me to, to do with my, my investment. And I invest in hammers, that's why I make a lot of money, and pencils. A pencil is one of the best investments I ever made. I could make two, three thousand dollars with a pencil.
Thank you, Ms. Irons.
Yeah, I hope, uh, those people that are getting evicted.
Joyce Kelly. Joyce Kelly.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Assistant City Manager, who funds Career Link?
Mrs. Kelly, the Career Link is funded through the City of Compton's General Fund.
Okay, it's completely, well, if the city, I'm not talking directly to you, but if the City of Compton, and this is including all elected officials, especially the council and the mayor, if you were concerned about jobs and the people being off the streets, the people being able to take care of themselves, and especially with, uh, HHS's, um, penny tax, you cannot eliminate Career Link, and why would you want to eliminate an entity that's been there for fifty years? I know a lot of people who said they were trained at Career Link and got a job. They even worked for MTA and other places. You know what? I don't know, yeah, I do know what's going on. But you people need to stop being so petty, childish, and thinking you're on the elementary school playground. This is real business. This is the City of Compton. You had a chance to make this city great again, but what did you do? Well, the State Controller said you misappropriated millions and millions of dollars. You're in a hole, have a deficit of what, forty-three million? You're not trying to make matters better. You've allowed this dictator to run over you, throw you under the bus. Now you don't have the salaries you used to have, and you're sitting there. But I tell you one thing, when I see you out there, you're going out there, you're handing out your business cards, and you act like you're so proud. I don't know what you could be proud of. Have you looked at this city? And some of these things, I'm late hearing it, but I'll find out about what is proposed in this budget. But you need to start thinking about the people in this city. When, or which one of you decided that you're going to do something for the city's one hundred thirtieth birthday? Or did you know? We have organizations that were set up who could do this. You have money in your individual budgets that you could give five thousand, ten thousand to celebrate, to do something for the people in this city. Oh, yeah, that's right, let them eat cake. We don't want any cake anymore. We want your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, can you pull that door, please? Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Limboon.
Limboon, City of Compton. You know, um, I just want to tell the people of Compton, the audit is real. It is real, and I heard the city manager, I think it was a week ago or whatever, saying that he was glad that the audit came. But you know, it's just surprising to me that he didn't request an audit. He never said anything about an audit. If I hadn't been holding a conversation with the State Controller for several years, we probably still wouldn't have had an audit. And, you know, sure, true enough, some of the council members came here, and there was a, a deficit already of forty million and plus. But this council, this council right here, you guys created a six point four million dollar deficit added. And it was two ex-city managers that put together two different payment plans. You didn't follow either one. And then last week, I overheard, uh, Councilperson in District One and Ms. Brown say that some things are not responsible for. You guys need to pull that charter up again. You are responsible a hundred percent in this city. A dime can't be spent, money can't be taken in. People can't even be employed until it goes past you. You need to read that. The power of the city is vested in the city council. The power is the people, it's our voices. Not in the mayor, not in the city treasurer, not in the city attorney or the clerk, but in the city council. So you need to stop trying to blame anybody else and turn that mirror around to yourself, because you are responsible for everything in this city, everything. You pick your two employees, your city manager, and your city controller. Some of you guys need to sit, sit up and read what their jobs really are. Because if anything goes down money-wise, everybody's gonna be looking at you, the council members. You just don't realize how important you are. Now, we have Ms. Brown over there, City Manager, last week, last year, Mr. Ram. Almost a month ago. So, you know, it's just one lie after another, and I don't know when we came as people to start accepting lies. But people, I do want to tell you, there are people on the outside listening, and we are still focusing. And if you want to sign in New York, there is a number on here that you can call and get you the sign. Because we don't get age around about that much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam, uh, City, City Clerk, that was the end of your, oh.
Madam Mayor, City Council. Um, here on behalf of Margaret and Uncle Jim, would ask, uh, City Council to please alert the community that they're having our eighth annual aviation support date at Margaret and Uncle Jim, Graceville, Compton. Also, the, the airfare, the council, and open houses for the airport. I'm not sure, uh, how many of you have driven by, uh, the airport, they took, uh, the council's former career next season. Uh, we have a eight million dollar new, uh, renovation at the airport. We also have a lot of other things, I'm not gonna test you, I can't even come right to see. But, uh, more importantly, uh, Compton is being highlighted internationally for what's taking place at our airport. And thanks to our partners, both here in the city and the school district. Uh, we have the children, students participate in the league, uh, competition with, uh, we have built responsible six X, and Margaret and Uncle Jim. And, uh, come on, see, uh, people who like to, you know, a lot of cameras, the person, the dark.
You know, sometimes you have to just say, you know, what can I do to make it a little bit better in the City of Compton? And, uh, we want to, uh,
give you an opportunity to try to see what happens when we work together. Uh, I look at you and see, uh, your faces, and I don't need you for having been here and, and deal with, and I know what they, we all work together to go to the first. Compton is known for a lot of things. Uh, we're hoping that the education, and I really, I'm trying to go around, we, what Compton is known for. Well, I think a lot of secrets, I'm gonna say that if you Google NASA just made a announcement that it will not be, uh, doing its next, uh, mission tomorrow in Texas. It'd be done right here in California, in our tomorrow, that we're looking to, we're looking for. There will also be an announcement of a million dollar competition to which our students, who are work students, that are not in college or at the university. So that announcement will be in the City of Compton, that's Compton there, not what we did. Please, keep reading, keep supporting, keep coming by, and, uh, I know that all citizens of Compton are not upset.
With the work that you do. Some of us thank you for your hard work, because you were chosen to do it. God bless you.
Uh, Bishop.
Yes.
Can you give the deputy some of those to give to us? Um, a couple of people just texted, said they couldn't really hear you, so I'll make the announce, announcement again.
And Compton, thank you very much for the announcement, right, uh, being on my phone.
Family is putting together the, the services, and when we got, when we get those services complete, I will let you know, so that you can, uh, everyone know. We, I know that there's some interesting, you like, uh, uh, a lot of, what we're trying to decide on that. We're, we're, thank you very much, the, 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 the.
Thank you.
God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Madam City Clerk, that's the end of our audience comments.
Uh, Madam Mayor Protem, can we take five minutes?
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
Yes. Five minutes. We'll take a five minute break.
Hello?
Excuse me?
We're now at consent agenda?
Uh, consent and, uh, consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They are acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless the council member requests an item to be removed or discussed.
Is there motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sharif.
Yes.
Um, item number four, the city manager's report is a request for city council to ratify waiver of Burrell McDonald Community Center facility fees for repass services for Leela Butler held on April the twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen in the amount of two-hundred dollars and this is an action item.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sharif.
Yes.
Item number five is a request for city council to ratify waiver of Dollar High Community Center facility fees for repass services for Rodney Thomas held on May fifth, twenty-eighteen in the amount of three-hundred dollars and this is an action item.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sharif.
Yes.
Where city attorneys reports.
Thank you. Mayor Potem, City Council, we have, uh, closed session. Legal updates being proposed for this evening. First is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Bradford versus City of Compton. Cal second app district. Case number B-two-seven-six-two-three-six. Blair versus City of Compton, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number B.C. six-seven-four-three-three-zero. And Contreras versus City of Compton, United States District Court, case number Pursuant to California Government Code, section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-A. And conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one potential case for discussion pursuant to California Government Code, section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-B.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sharif.
Yes.
Item number seven, under new business, is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, opposing the Tax Fairness, Transparency and Accountability Act of twenty-eighteen.
Discussion?
Motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, yes. Mayor Potem. Mister City Manager, can you give a brief, um, explanation of this to the people?
Yes. Madam, uh, Mayor Potem, members of the City Council. The Tax Fairness, Transparency and Accountability Act of two thousand and eighteen is a, is a proposed ballot measure for the November ballot. This measure has not yet qualified. However, the California League of Cities is asking, uh, all cities to take a position in opposition to this, uh, ballot measure as it's being distributed. The measure would drastically limit local revenue authority. Among other limitations, the measure would eliminate local authority to impose a tax for general purposes by majority vote and instead require all local proposed tax increases uh, to be subject to a two-thirds vote for the city council in the City of Compton. That would require four votes out of five to even place an item on, uh, before the taxpayers. This proposal also requires, uh, a two-thirds approval of all members of the local legislative body before a tax can even, can be placed on the ballot. Um, it would also restrict the ability of government to impose fees or charges other than those that are subject to Prop. two-eighteen. So it would significantly restrict the ability of government to impose fees or charges, uh, as well as to present local funding measures. And for that reason, the city manager is recommending opposition to this, uh, tax measure.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sharif.
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Alliant Insurance Services, Inc. for all property and casualty insurance brokerage services.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sharif.
Yes.
Your, uh, council comments?
Uh, City, uh, sorry, Councilwoman Zarita?
Um, thank you. Just a couple of quick announcements. Um, my fifth annual Autism Swim Club is accepting sign, sign-ins right now. And the class will begin June ninth, two thousand and eighteen, at nine AM to ten-thirty AM and will go through August eleventh. It's at, uh, Gonzalez Park, one-zero, one-one-zero-one West Cressy Avenue. And to register, you can contact Armani Taylor at three-one-zero-six-zero-five-five-five-one-zero. And we do ask, the one requirement is that a parent or guardian is in the water at all times with the children. And I'll be hosting a budget workshop for District One. That'll be Thursday, May thirty-first at six PM to eight PM at Gonzalez Park, one-one-zero-one West Cressy Avenue. For more information, you can contact Ms. Taylor at three-one-zero-six-zero-five-five-five-one-zero. Or you can contact the city manager's office, um, the management team. So that's May thirty-first. And those of you that miss your district budget workshop, you can attend District One or for whatever reason you can't make the date for your district, you're always welcome, to attend District One. And I'm co-hosting that, so I'm not sure if the city manager staff is providing light refreshments.
We will.
Cause we'll have light refreshments at the town hall meeting. Those of you that have some input or some concerns, it's your opportunity to do so at the budget workshops. Don't wait till the last minute or don't wait till after the fact. And I'm very honored since Councilwoman, uh, McCoy is out handling business, um, mosquito business as a matter of fact. Um, her and the city manager are in Washington, D.C. working on, um, the creek. Making sure that the responsible parties clean the creek, um, down nearby the hotel where the trash builds up and the mosquitoes manifest. So they're out there trying to make sure that everything is taken care of. So I get to brag on tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum, which is in the third district. And they're having their eighth annual Aviation Expo and Job Fair Saturday, this Saturday, May nineteenth, twenty-eighteen, ten AM to four PM. It's a STEM event. So those of, they have college booths, job fair, open house. Um, it's co-hosted by American Airlines, Compton Unified, City of Compton, American Airports Cooperation, National College Resources, um, City Pride Museum, and it's all free. And if you've never been to one, you should really go. Um, and tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum is fascinating. Um, those of you that have not been there in the last year, I highly recommend that you go by and check it out. You'd be amazed. It's, it's, the technology is to the roof. Um, they're no longer, um, focusing on flying, they're going to space. That's what their main focus is. So those of you that have not been over there, it's really worth your time to go over and see the museum and utilize the resources. And with that, I'd like to say happy eighty-seventh birthday to my father, Clarence Zarita, who was my biggest fan and probably cheering me on right now. Happy birthday daddy. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I have a couple of requests for the, uh, city manager. First, I want to make sure I invite all the residents out to my town hall meeting tomorrow at Looters Park. Um, fifteen-hundred East Rosecrans Avenue, uh, six PM, uh, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow evening. I hope to see you all there. Um, I wanted to make some complaints to the, uh, or bring some stuff to the city, uh, manager's attention. Um, Caesar Chavez Park, uh, has been riddled with graffiti lately. We have a lot of graffiti, um, on. been riddled with graffiti lately. We have a lot of graffiti, um, on the Caesar Park Chi, uh, Caesar Chavez Park sign itself, as well as on the wall across the street from the park, which is a hotspot for graffiti. So, uh, maybe we can get the people out there, Urban Graffiti Company to come and, uh, uh, remove it. Um, also, I want the cities, the city manager staff to look into towing all the overnight trailers on Alameda Boulevard. Um, right there, there's a, a bunch of them. There's over a dozen trailers parked there with people, uh, beginning to just, uh, camp out there and live there. So, um, I want to see if we can do something to, uh, get rid of them, or at least, you know, push them out of the city somehow or something, because I don't think it's fair to our residents to have to, uh, uh, drive by and see those, uh, conditions right there. Um, also, I want to make a, a, a request to the sheriff's department. Um, I know we have the captain in the back. Um, I'm beginning to have a lot of homeless encampments in my district at my parks. Um, in particular Looters Park, which the, uh, they sleep right in front of the street on Rosecrans, and on the side of the, of the park, uh, next to the tennis court. Um, I reported it several times on this council de, Diaz. Um, the same people are there, and it doesn't seem like, uh, the city staff is, uh, making it a priority to get rid of them, as well as, uh, they to, totally took over one of our pocket parks on Palmer and Long Beach Boulevard adjacent to D and D Liquor Store. Um, there's about, what, four or five tents of people actually living in there. They totally took it over, so I want the city staff and the sheriffs to remove them out immediately. And even at Caesar Chavez Park, uh, they're beginning to camp out there now too. Um, they built a tent right there. Uh, there's people sleeping in their cars. Um, I think what will help discourage the cars overnight parking is to tow the cars if they leave their cars there overnight. That park has a gate which can be locked, and for some reason it's never locked. So maybe, uh, the Parks and Rec staff, uh, that's over that park can lock it every night to discourage overnight parking and, uh, living in that park. Um, and, you know, I think enough is enough. Uh, 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 you know, it's, it's starting to build up into like a whole community. And, um, I think that we have to make, uh, uh, make sure that, you know, we move them out every single day. Um, and we're, I think right now we're making it to, uh, 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 we're turning a blind eye to what they're doing, and it's only growing and growing. And, uh, if we don't do something soon, it's gonna get overwhelming. I want to request, uh, that we shut off the water fountains at Caesar Chavez Park, because I've seen with my own two eyes the homeless people actually showering inside the water fountain, cleaning their clothes, um, and then our kids go and drink from that same water fountain. I think that's unsafe. I think that's unsanitary, and I would like the water fountains to be shut off in the meantime. Um, I don't know if we're able to do that or not, but, uh, I think it's not safe to our kids to be able to, uh, have them, uh, uh, be, uh, exposed to that kind of stuff. Um, Caesar Chavez Park, again, I've made this request, uh, several weeks ago. Um, several of the lights at Caesar Chavez Park are still turned off. Um, I know I spoke to you yesterday about it, um, Mister Assistant City Manager, and you assured me that it was gonna get taken care of, but I'm asking again for the people watching at home. Um, I've reported the lights right there. I thi, I think I've counted over twelve of them. The response I got back was that, uh, they're on a timer, but I don't find that to be true, because why would some lights go on at night and then the other ones be off? And also, there eat, there's, uh, several light poles at that park that have exposed wires, and I think that's a safety hazard to our kids. So maybe we can find a way to tomorrow, uh, or even tonight, or immediately to, um, patch up the spots that the, the, the wires that are exposed, so our kids don't stick their hands in there and play and stuff.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor Protem, uh, members of the council, councilman Galvan, the, uh, city, uh, has, has observed the condition that, that you're speaking of. Uh, I would like to, if you would indulge the general service director to come up to speak to the status of what we ordered to be done today.
Is he still here? He probably left.
Did they leave?
Do you want to just tell me what you ordered him to do?
Um, uh, let me have the public works director come. He worked with him on the solution, because we're working on a more permanent solution to that issue with the lights.
What is the issue? He'll be able to tell me?
Yes, there, uh, is actually, um, a disturbance of the actual wires themselves by the, uh,
Whoever.
homeless persons who are in the park.
Good evening, council. Mister City Manager, Madam Clerk, City Attorney, and Mister Treasurer. Uh, working together with general services in the Park Department, uh, Public Works, uh, went out to the site and took a look at the issues were out there. And essentially, there's a couple, a couple of things. There were some lamps that were out. Those lamps were immediately replaced, okay? And the, um, there's a couple of starters that had to be ordered that we'll be doing in the next couple, couple of days in order for us to install that. And then secondly, or thirdly, we're taking a look at replacing the fixture with a LED fixture, which is, is less receptacle, less receptive to, um, vibrations and, 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 and outages of the ballast.
I'm just gonna add to what, uh, Mister Johnson just stated. There are only three lights that are remaining out. Uh, there were a total of five. Um, bulbs required for two of them. Three require ballast. Uh, it's a older part.
When did you guys go check them out?
Today, this morning, nine o'clock.
How did you check them out in the, in the daylight?
Turn them on. Turn them on, and you can see the light, uh, illuminated. We checked the, we checked the photo cell.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Maybe, maybe someone can drive by tonight, cause I know there's more than four. I mean, each light pole has four lights on it, and only one bulb in each of them works, so there's at least three missing.
Right, so each pole, each pole has three lights in it. There's one pole that actually has four lights in it.
Okay.
Total of, uh, five poles, I believe. Um, the, I think one of the biggest challenges that we have, and I think you've already stated it, is at the base of the pole, um, there's a service plate.
Yeah.
Um, we noticed a number of homeless, uh, people who were sitting around, and all of the poles were, uh, the, the service plate was exposed. So I must have.
Why do they do that?
Beg your pardon?
Why do you think they do that?
Uh, tap into electricity.
But why?
Uh, I've got, uh, I wanna charge a phone, or I wanna power a television, or I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, so, but those are some of the possibilities that you have. But we, we, um, we, um, fixed the, the service plate and all of the lights, and then we also placed an order for the, for the three remaining ballast that we're gonna, that we're going to be using to replace the other three lights. The shields for all of the lights also need replacing. So, um, so that's, uh, something also that we'll have to order, are just the shields for them.
And I know that we have several cameras in that particular park. Are those cameras functioning?
Uh, the cameras, the lenses for the cameras have been shot out also, so we identified that also.
So we have to get new cameras in there?
Yes, well, at le, at minimum, the, the shields for them.
So what, how, when did you guys identify that?
Today.
Today, and, uh, do you know how long they've been out?
Uh, I don't, but I can give you, I can report back to you on that.
Yeah, you know, because there, there's beginning to be a lot of, uh, suspicious activity taking place at that park. Um, and I think it has a lot to do with the homeless people that are living there. I think they may be doing, uh, questionable things aside from being homeless there, and, um, I think the sheriffs need to really crack down on that park.
We're also looking, uh, um, Councilman Galvan, at look, at identifying, uh, a stronger alternative to securing the electrical boxes, so that it won't be as easy to access.
Yeah, that was gonna be my follow-up question.
Okay.
And, um, while you're up here, uh, my next, uh, request to the city manager was gonna be a status on Wilson Park Basketball Gym. I know we shut it down. Is it still, it's still shut down, right?
It is still shut down.
Okay.
Uh, we've received, um, adequate quotes for all of the work that's being proposed. Uh, we met with the, uh, the city manager's office last week, and I think the city's identified a, uh, a new source of, of funding. It will have to go through a full R and P, um, process. Uh, we anticipate it being a sixty-four day duration for the, for the work to be completed. It would be a complete, um, renovation of the, of the park. And when I say complete, it's the full basketball courts, restrooms, uh, moved up to ADA compliance. Uh, the entire facility will be painted. Also involves some lighting upgrades. Um, and , uh, we're just, uh, we're working with, uh, grants, um, to, uh, to secure the funding, and the city manager would be able to provide you some additional detail.
Do you know when that RFP is gonna come back to the body?
Uh, so we have, uh, we would have to, um, list the work. We'd have to have the notice posted no later than Thursday. That's a two-week process. We're gonna do the shortest time that we can do, which would be two weeks. Uh, it would come, uh, to council, uh, about the third week for council, um, approval on it.
So the third week of, uh, what do you think, the second week of June?
So it would be the, uh, I think the seventh of June is when, seventh of June, I believe, was the date that we had anticipated the, um, the closure, uh, and then the following week.
Cause I know the kids are about to get on summer break, and a lot of them utilize that, uh, park. Um, I know we have the summer program right there, so I want to make sure that we get it up and running, um, as fast as we could to accommodate the kids that are off of school, give them a safe place to play and hang out.
The longest lead items are fourteen days. That would be the flooring, um, excuse me, the flooring and the, um, we were doing a synthetic, uh, coat on the walls. Wall, the floors can't be done until the walls get completed, because there's scaffolding that's gonna be erected. But while that gymnasium component is being taken care of, the work that relates to the restrooms, the office, those, that stuff, that'll be taking place. So the, like I said, the total duration is sixty-four days, but that sixty-four days does include the time that it need from, from notification to completion of work is sixty-four day calendar.
So, Ga, Councilman Galvan.
Sure.
You identified that much damage in the gym that it's still closed down?
Yeah. And, uh, I, I've reported it, uh, months in advance, and, uh, it wasn't until I was able to get the city manager out there himself to take a look at it, that he's seen how serious it actually was. And, uh, something like that doesn't happen overnight. It's happened over a period of time, and it seems like, uh, certain people turned a blind eye to it. And so, um, I'm glad that we're getting it done. I'm not happy that it's gonna take so long to get it done, because that pretty much is the whole summer, that, uh, it's, the kids ain't gonna be able to utilize that park. And, uh, not only that, I felt like it was a safe place for the older, I guess I wanna call them young adults, to, uh, congregate and, uh, you know, stay off the streets and, uh, play basketball, and, uh, now that's not a possibility. But I'm glad we're getting it done.
So, I'm sorry, Councilman Galvan, but I just have to ask you to get clarification on this. So you reported, uh, Caesar Chavez Park, and they went on and did an inspection, and that's when they discovered that the cameras were out. So we don't have any kind of maintenance on the cameras when you guys are notified when they're out, or, I don't, how does that work, Galvan?
I wouldn't know. This is the first I heard that the cameras were actually out. I might, I always thought the sheriffs were monitoring them twenty-four seven.
So we receive a daily update on all of the cameras. Uh, we do not have a current funding source for cameras. And, and I want to repeat that. We do not have a current funding source for the cameras. We have made a, we had a meeting last week with the city manager, with the sheriff's department, with the, uh, with, uh, the camera, um, uh, with a company that we are proposing as the, uh, maintenance company for the cameras. The proposed budget for the cameras is going to be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's going to, we're also going to be making a recommendation for an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think, on an annual basis, in order to keep the cameras in a functional condition.
But in the meantime, we paying a third party, aren't we? Who's doing the daily report?
We are paying a daily report for monitoring. So the day, the, the company that does the, or the individual that does the monitor.
So that, that, the, the fact that we don't have money for cameras has nothing to do with the fact that these cameras are out and nobody knew. No, those have nothing to do with each other.
So, so let me provide some clarification there.
Yeah, clarify that.
We, we have known that the cameras have been out, uh, that report is sent to the, that.
You just say, Bernie, five minutes ago.
That report has been sent to the city manager. It is sent to the city manager on a weekly base, excuse me, a daily basis, um, as well as to the sheriffs on a daily basis, as well as to my department on a daily basis. Uh, when your quo, your original question was, when did I find out? I was there today. I literally took a picture of the camera. So that, that is what I was referring to. So when I went out, I said, wow, there's, the lens is shut out.
So it must've went out today.
Beg your pardon?
It must've went out today.
Uh, I will check the report, and I'll let you know. I'll, I'll let you know when it was, when it was first reported down.
So you're saying the city manager's staff, if it was, if it's, if it has been out for months, the city manager's staff was well aware of that?
Yes.
And just decided to leave it out?
But the city, aren't the cameras in your department?
They are.
Okay, so, I mean, I, we, we need clarification on this. Again, for the tenth time, I need to know that the avenue of the cameras and the maintenance and the monitoring, because clearly it's going left to right and behind the wall somewhere, and there's no clear avenue.
Uh, yes, uh, members of the council, the city manager, in last week's presentation to you on his budget priorities included, uh, approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, new, uh, for camera, uh, uh, citywide cameras. We are going through the process now, uh, working with the sheriffs, as well as our own staff, of determining the effectiveness of those cameras, so that we don't invest six hundred and twenty-five thousand or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in something that's not being monitored. So we want to make sure that we're investing in cameras that are being monitored. But the city manager has set aside funds in his recommended budget to address camera issue. He is now looking at the, at the question of the effectiveness of how those cameras are going to be deployed.
Well, you know, all, all of that is clear. All of that is clear, what was presented last week, the presentation on the cameras, and if we can even have a citywide project, all that's clear. But the fact here tonight is, we have cameras, and we're paying somebody to monitor these cameras, and we still are not getting them monitored properly. That's what's the fact is tonight.
How much are we paying the company to monitor the cameras?
Can you answer that question?
I think our annual contract to them was about twenty thousand dollars. That twenty thousand dollars includes, again, um, they're here about a couple of hours, uh, per week. Uh, they review the cameras online to make the sure that the sheriffs are aware, as well as the city's aware, of what is out. So there should be three parts to this, to this camera, um, project. There's need, there needs to be a maintenance component, which is not in place. There needs to be a monitoring component, which is partially the, the, um, the contractor that we use. And then there needs to be a determination on who will be monitoring them. So the city, uh, security has access to the cameras. They look at primarily parks and things of that nature. And then the sheriff's department is the, is the final component of it.
Cause I, I know that the citywide camera project is something that my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Zarita has been passionate about since I've been here, probably even before I got here. And, uh, you know, it just seems like there's so much, uh, uh, crime that could have been avoided if we had these, somebody monitoring these cameras, so many, uh, lives that, you know, probably could have been saved and not lost. And it's just, uh, I mean, I've always thought the cameras were working, and I always thought that the sheriffs were monitoring them twenty-four seven, you know, cause I was always like, man, these guys come here every day and do the same things, and nobody arrests them. Like, what's going on, you know? Like, uh, it's really frustrating. Um, and I hope that we get to the bottom of it very fast and very soon, because, uh, uh, summer's coming up, and that's when crime picks up and stuff. And I think these cameras working, uh, would really, uh, help us out a lot. And, uh, it's just really, uh, discouraging to hear what I heard today. And, uh, especially, uh, very disappointed in the city manager and his staff, because according to your director, you guys knew that the cameras were out, and you guys pretty much just avoided it for who knows how long, so.
Well, the, the fact that a matter is, everybody passed the buck. Nobody wants to take responsibility or be accountable. The director here is at the podium blaming it on his boss, the city manager's staff. So, I mean, somebody, somebody.
I place no, I place no blame.
Somebody needs to be held accountable, not just the council, you know?
Thank you, sir. Um, another thing that I want to ask publicly again, um, I'm gonna ask the city attorney. Um, I requested a resolution, uh, a few, uh, weeks ago about, um, bringing a item to the city council agenda, and I know you answered this earlier to me, but I want to a, ask it again for the benefit of the public. Uh, I want to bring back a resolution, so the city council, um, appoints the mayor Protem, and it's not on a rotating basis. Um, can you share with the public, when do you think that item will come back before the body? Um, can you share with the public, when do you think that item will come back before the body?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman, it's anticipated it would come back, uh, in two weeks. There's one, um, issue, uh, that council may want to, uh, determine. The situation you're referring to is when we're down to three council members?
No, the situation is how we select the mayor pro tem. Right now, y- you said that it was a rotating mayor pro tem. So if I'm mayor pro tem this year, next year it's Jana. I want a resolution back so the council dictates exactly who the next mayor pro tem is gonna be.
And keep the same situation when the mayor and the mayor pro tem are absent?
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. And, um, let me see. You know, that's the end of my comments, but I wanna, um, really emphasize again to the sheriffs, as well as to the city manager and his staff and the attorney's office, if he can do anything about it, of moving the homeless people out of the encampment on Palmer and, uh, Long Beach Boulevard. Move the homeless out of Looters Park and out of Caesar Chavez Park. Because I think that, uh, uh, parks are one place where we shouldn't, um, uh, just turn a blind eye to the homeless situation, which is a big issue that we have to deal with. But I think our parks should remain safe, clean, and, uh, uh, a, a place where our kids can go play without their parents having to worry about what's gonna happen to them. The, they're sleeping in the exact same spot every single day. Um, so, you know, I really wanna, uh, clean up the parks.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, and Alameda as well.
I just have a quick, uh, comment that about a year and a half ago, I believe, I prepared an ordinance and council approved, um, dealing with, uh, camping and on public property. That ordinance and how to resolve that situation is detailed in the ordinance. My office would not be involved in enforcement. But we did prepare, uh, the law and council approved it.
What's the law? Do, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but a generalization.
You cannot, uh, camp on public property, which would include the park. It's prohibited.
Yeah. And I really think another, uh, key to, uh, discouraging the encampments and, uh, it's something I've been asking for a while too, like, I think over two years, maybe even longer, is signs at the park saying, "No overnight sleeping." And, uh, Caesar Chavez Park in particular, because there's only one driveway and there's a gate that you, that whoever, I mean, what time do the parks close? Eight o'clock? Seven, eight o'clock? The park closes at ten P M? There's a staffer there that late at ten P M?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council. Uh, my name is Marvin Hunt, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, all of our community center staff, uh, ends their shift at eight P M. Uh, however, uh, there's an ordinance stating that the parks are only operable from, uh, sunup to sundown. Uh, the parks close at ten P M at night.
So there's nothing, there's no staff person that can lock the gate each night at Caesar Chavez Park?
Uh, uh, Ms. Mr. Councilman, we have actually requested for staff to review that, uh, and one of the solutions is that they're looking at alternatives, including bringing in, uh, a barrier to the, uh, ingress, egress of the parking lot that could be locked every night. So that's something that would-
The current one, there's one right there already. Did you know that?
Well, that's one of the things that was first, that was the first response that we got when we brought it up. So then our question is, well, wh- wh- what's taking so long? And then there are issues about the quality of what's there, people being able to break into the existing barriers. We have the same issue in the third district at Tucker Park where we have the barrier, but the, uh, people in the neighborhood destroyed the barrier when you lock it. So we, we have to come up with an alternative that will withstand, uh, that kind of a casual breaking down. And so we are, w- w- we are looking at that. We want to put into place what you're asking for.
Yeah.
And we're looking for a solution to be able to accomplish that.
Maybe we should think about closing our parks, changing our ordinance and closing our parks at, not, at, uh,
Eight?
Eight, so that the staff can lock them up before they leave. Because we gonna have the same issue with, uh, Seabree Park with that restroom.
I mean, uh, whoever leaves Looters Park locks the gates, cause I've driven by at night and I can't get in there, you know? So I know that, uh, they lock them at Looters Park for sure. Uh, yes, councilperson, that was just one of our issues, uh, one of our staff persons at Looters. Um, we just had so many issues with the homeless driving in and out. Uh, just recently, about three weeks ago, uh, someone drove up on the grass area with their vehicle. He did lock the gate. You know, I, I did tell him to, uh, make sure he doesn't lock it because the park absolutely doesn't close until ten P M. But, uh-
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can, uh, I'll piggyback off of what my colleagues said. Maybe the city attorney can bring an ordinance back, uh, closing our parks earlier than, uh, uh, what we do right now. And I mean, uh, to me, it just seems like common sense, uh, if the parks, if we close the gate and people are parked there, then I think the sheriffs would have, uh, uh, no issue realizing that they're breaking the code or the city law or whatever it is and citing them. And even, uh, potentially towing the vehicles that are camping out there overnight. While you're up there, uh, Marvin, um, how are we on schedule for the pool?
Uh, we're looking good. We, um, we'll be putting the water into the pool tomorrow. Uh, it'll take about maybe three days for the chemicals to balance. Uh, and we're also doing our orientation for all of our aquatic positions on May twenty-second.
How's the lifeguard, uh, situation? Good?
Great, great. You know, this is the first year, uh, probably in the last four or five years that we've had uh, almost one hundred percent, uh, occupancy rate for all of our lifeguard positions. So we have fourteen and we have thirteen currently going through background screening process.
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman, um, wait a minute for-
That's what I was gonna ask you. Marvin, okay, thank you.
What's the date, Marvin, that it opens?
May twenty-sixth. May twen- is that a Monday? That's a Saturday. So next Saturday.
Uh, we have to stop the meeting.
I don't think I have any more questions for you. You can place it on there. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I'm gonna be very brief because we need to move on. The Los Angeles County, the City of Compton is holding a free household hazardous waste collection on Saturday, May nineteenth, from nine A M to three P M at the Compton College. That address is one-one-one-one East Artigia Boulevard. And you can take all of your household hazardous waste and e-waste items to the free roundup. For more information, please call eight-eight-eight-two-five-three-two-six-five-two. That's eight-eight-eight-two-five-three-two-six-five-two. And, uh, also, um, I reported that we have some, uh, street lights that's out there, out on, uh, Long Beach Boulevard, uh, on the southwest side between a laundry and mirror. So that's been reported a while back. And it appear those lights may belong to the city and they have been out for quite a while. So if someone could please go out and check and find out what is really up with those streets, with those street lights. And, uh, also, I would like to get an update on eleven oh five South Alameda. Uh, I'd like to know where we regarding the demolition of that, uh, that building. Uh, is Mr., uh, General Services, anyone here?
Is Van here? Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council.
Uh, yes, I was looking for an update on eleven oh five South Alameda. I would no- like to know where was, was the demolition of the building.
Yes, so eleven oh five, we are, uh, seven days, uh, seven days, that's, uh, you're six days away from getting the, um, uh, a permit from AQMD. Once the permit is in hand, uh, three other components needed to take place. The, the permit was the responsibility of the, of the demo contractor. City was responsible for terminating water. That's been done. City is also responsible for terminating gas. That's been done. And the city is also responsible for terminating electrical. And, uh, we are, we've been coordinating with, uh, Southern California Edison. That's the one thing on our part that hasn't been done and, uh, it has to be scheduled through Edison. We hope to have that done, um, at the same time that the, uh, uh, that the same time that the, that the demo permit comes back. So, uh, we are anticipating a week to two weeks before the demo process starts.
So you already reached out to the gas company in order to have?
Yes. So the gas and water have already, uh, terminated services.
So-
Or, or vacated services is actually, is actually determined.
So everything has been vacated except?
Except for, uh, the electrical through Edison.
And right now, you've already reached out to them from the-
Yes, yes. We've actually met with them, uh, several times.
Okay. Okay. So we are on track?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the end of my audience comments. And I would like to have a motion for, to, uh, convene.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, Zarita?
Yes.
Do you want to, uh?
Motion to reconvene? Some of-
Second.
Councilperson Zarita?
Here.
Present.